Right now, we had an appointment at seven o'clock who it has been postponed on the Bresner Hand property. They're working to address some site issues of the storage unit facility that's built in on, built, being built on the north side of Kingston right off 125. When did, did we choose a date? Did they indicate when they would be ready?
I think another week, but Charlie Zilt will be here later on another matter.
Okay. I'll read this, put this, I'm sure we got it on our website. Well, you got, is this already set up or you're asking if that's an appropriate time?
You can just call me today to do some sort of a draft so you can talk about putting that in the paper. We have the date, you have to set a time that you want it to take place, October 23rd, was it?
Yeah, October 23rd, and I figure we pick a time, six might be a little too early, I don't, seven is late, but I-
Well, this is six thirty.
This was, I was suggesting, but it's up to the board what you think. This is for the state coming to talk about PFAS as far as the Tommy Goss site, the plains, you know, what causes PFAS, you know, the A triple F foam versus household chemicals. It's an opportunity for the residents, whether it be Newton or Kingston, to come and get their questions answered about PFAS.
And is this, is the state already lined up for it?
They lined up for October 23rd, yes.
We just gotta give them the time back?
Correct, and then I just want to get in the paper for Thursday so we can start announcing it.
Okay. Does anybody have objection to making it at six thirty? I think that gives everybody time to get home from work and, no objection to that? Okay, so we will advertise it. It's an informational meeting which will be held with the representatives of New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services to learn more about PFA, PFOA contamination that has been found in drinking water nationwide, including locally. Bring your questions and concerns about private wells, local ponds, the Italian Goss Superfund site, and other related matters. Updates on activity at the town and state level to identify, quantify, and remediate this problem will be discussed. Again, October 23rd, 2019, here at six thirty in the town hall.
And you'll put that on the website and the bulletin board?
The bulletin board and the meeting.
And actually, you want to contact Newton?
Okay.
Did we post the new meeting date for the reconstruction of Route 125? Did we post that?
I don't know what the new meeting date is, I was looking at that and I don't see what it is set on.
Okay, I'll get that for you. It is set.
Okay. After that, I couldn't, couldn't see any date.
I'll, I'll get that date.
I think we, did we discuss this last week on Grace Wood from Blackfin?
Does it sound familiar?
Gee, but I think, I think you were probably given this just so, in case you got some filming that was going on?
I haven't heard from her.
Okay.
So, I did, I did see it, but I have not heard from her. I think you recommended that she call me, right?
Yeah, I told her over the phone that I should call you about that, so I'll remind her. There are no other-
Town restrictions, I don't believe, on a drone? No, they just have to follow FAA regulations. We don't have an ordinance pertaining to it. Everybody received in their package a, basically a thank you letter from Rockingham Plan, Planning Commission. They're giving us an update on what the dues would be for next year. To continue as a member is $6,244. And they've enclosed a list of the things that they can help the town with, along with contact information. And I think they actually did send a, how they're funded, their budget, and their expenses, which was kind of interesting, if you want to take a look at it. Everybody get that, right?
I, do we want a motion or we gotta, I, I, I think we do get, including looking at the co-op buying alone, I, I think it's something that-
It does open the doors and leaves us at a small cost to have a connection with them. And I would, I would hope the board would continue to pay the dues, the benefits we get from far away, the $6,244.
But I think the majority of what we use, but we don't use it from them as the municipal planner, correct?
Well, we were members for years and Glenn Greenwood was employed by them, and he served as our planner through them. Now, he has gone out on his own, so no, we no longer utilize a direct planner from the, from the commission.
But that was a separate cause also?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, but one of the prerequisite was you had to be a member to be eligible, which you no longer do.
Can, can somebody tell me how many hours they invest in doing these things for the town of Kingston every year? Anybody got any idea? I know Glenn does ninety-nine percent of it, right?
He does.
Yep.
Well, they do maps, they do quite a bit of things for the different groups now, and they're not-
I'm just kind of looking at the breakout for, you know, how many hours do they, do they actually do some of these things for the town? I know they, they can provide them to the town, but how many do they actually provide to the town?
As the chairman of the planning board, Glenn, could you, how, how often do you reach out to them for assistance or, you know, just on behalf of the planning board?
Mic's not on. Oh, the speakers aren't on.
Hang on a second. Sounds better without them.
There you go.
Really is.
Glenn's getting it.
Now we can hear you.
Live or is it memorized? Remember that?
I do.
Yeah, yeah. I'm trying to think, I mean, because we have a planner on staff here, it's the same planner that we had, and so when we had questions, when Glenn worked for the planning commission, we usually would go through him. We still go through him, and that's where most of our planning advice comes from. But when we get into any issues that are more regional in nature or things relating to the transportation plan or things like that, that's when the planning commission comes into play. If we need, if we need special maps done, we contact them. In fact, I've had contact with them recently to provide some maps for the RSA 79E project that, that we're working on, that, that you folks will be hearing about sometime in October, right, Richard?
Yeah, towards the end of October.
Yeah. We needed some, we needed some maps for, for that work, and, and so we called upon them and, and, you know, as part of, as part of their service to the community, they did it. We, we didn't, we didn't do it as a charged item, they just did it for us.
So, how long has Glenn been, have we been direct with Glenn now? Is it, in, will July, will it be a year or is it two years?
I think it has, I think it has been a year or close. I think it's been a year.
Okay, so July will be two years.
I think we're into the, I think we're into the second year now.
June, June of last year, I believe was when.
Okay. You know, one, it, it, it's easy to look at the dues and to think of it as, you know, well, you know, what, what direct service am I, am I getting for that? And, I mean, it's a legitimate question, but when, when Tim Roche was here, he was trying to explain that, that a lot of the dues are actually used as, as matching for the federal monies for a lot of the transportation work that, that's done and the ten-year transportation plan and, and all of that. So, you, you, it would be hard to, and it probably wouldn't even happen, to get a direct, we could get a tally of how many hours they spent for Kingston and we, we could get that, but it, I can tell you it's not going to tally up to the, to the amount of the dues. Just be, just because, just because the dues go to, it's essentially our cost for being part of this regional network of towns that are, that are, that are sort of together and coordinated by the planning commission, so it's-
You know, they sat on the Route 125 corridor rebuild, you know, they sat on that at least three meetings, four meetings, and three or four meetings that we had. But I hadn't seen them, you know, upfront do a lot of, a number of things for the town. That's why I was inquiring how many hours a year they pay.
Sure, that's probably why he came and visited us the other day.
This is what we can do for you.
Exactly.
Well, part, part of the reason-
Get into budget season.
Well, part of the reason they came to visit was because at a, at a, at a, at a meeting that I was here with you, there were questions about whether or not it was worth being a member. That question came up amongst you, and so I, you know, as your commissioner, as one of your commissioners to the commission representing Kingston, I went to Tim Roche and I said, "Look, the selectmen have questions here, you, you should be going to visit them." And so he got on, he got on your agenda. But he is, you know, he's, he's, he's a new director there and he is, he is trying to do more outreach to the communities and, and trying to get to visit them at least once a year, make sure he gets in front of the selectmen, answer questions, you know, talk to, talk to you folks about, you know, what the commission does and-
I, I think in the past they've had, we've done some like fifty-fifty grants with them. They've done some work on like our master plan and-
We have, we've had master plan chapters done and-
Stuff like that.
Yep.
Have you, have we done anything with that recently or is now Glenn going to be charged with-
No.
-those responsibilities?
No, no. If, if the planning commission, and I suspect they will, continue with those grants, they use a small portion of the, some of the money that they get as part of their block grant from the state, which is about, it's a small amount of money, it's eleven thousand a year or something, but they take a portion of that and they make it available in small matching grants for communities. And we've taken advantage of it when we've had master plan chapters and things like if we needed help with drafting up some new zoning ordinances and, so we have, we have done, we didn't, we didn't do a grant application last year, but there was a time that, going back a few years, that we got, we got that two or three years in a row. And as a result, we, in anticipation of that, the planning board does keep a line in its budget for matching grant, and some years we don't use that money and some years we do.
I think, anybody else got any questions? Move on. Thank you.
So, is that something we are going to do? Oh, you still got questions?
Well, I'm just kind of interested how many hours they, they put into the town each year. Might need some more research.
Well, may, maybe Glenn can get us that information.
If you'd like, I can reach out to Tim and see if he can-
That'd be great.
-get us some more information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I just gave Susan the date of the Route 125 meeting, so she's got that.
Thank you.
Okay. So, why don't we talk about the, the electric aggregation contract? Electricity. Now, my understanding is we don't know what the rate is?
Correct. Cindy's the one that went to it, so you'd have to ask her, but overall, there's, there's a savings over what we're currently paying.
That savings equates to how much?
Two grand a year. Two thousand a year.
Roughly two thousand a year.
So, the four major utilities are required to, through the Public Utilities Commission, go for rate increases before the PUC, and they do it on a regular basis.
Now, when you say a, a rate change, is it, is it based, when you say a rate change, is that for the transmission lines and the maintenance or is that the actual, just the cost of the electricity that they're charging?
I think it can be-
Because it's separate, right?
I think it can be a combination of each, but they are all separate. So, you have a delivery charge, an equipment charge, and the cost of the electricity. So, if we decided to go with one of these, one of these companies, we would still be paying Unitil for the costs of, the delivery cost and the equipment cost for using their equipment and them delivering the electricity to us. The only thing that would change would be the, the cost of the electricity, you know, kilowatt hours that we're charged for. Last year, we utilized approximately 204,000 kilowatt hours for all of the town buildings at a rate of .06872. And, and the different companies that are proposing are, some are .0753, .07731, depending on whether it's a twelve-month, twenty-four-month, or thirty-six-month contract. What we don't know is if Unitil will, will raise their rate again this year, so that, we don't, we don't have an answer for that. But how it, how it works is, so the rates, the rates are as follows, for Unitil, the summer rate is .068 cents per kilowatt hour for summer and .105 cents per kilowatt hour for the winter. And that's June, June 1 through November 30th of the summer, summer months, 12, 1 through May 31 of the winter months. So, there is obviously a different cost when dealing with Unitil, summer months versus winter months. And I think what they're doing is they're just going across the board, these companies are going across the board, showing that this is what they're going to charge you per summer and winter, right across the board. So, I would say if we're, I would think that we would probably want to keep it very close to what we're paying now, which is, is .06872.
Well, looking at that, I, I think they probably, I don't think that's right. I think that's-
That's what they're claiming it is.
That's, well, they're not factoring in the winter rate though.
Okay.
So, if you, I think, I, I think we do consume more in the summer.
Yep.
But it's, it'd be, so if you factored that in-
What does it factor in?
So, I mean, you know, that'd be roughly a, a rate of what, 105 and 1, so 6, 8, and let's say if you split it in half? 105, right? Plus 068. I mean, that gives you the, that, that's where the, well, I got 865, but-
8501 next to it.
I, I would say, when they say projected, I would say that's what that represents.
Oh.
That represents the two rates, summer and winter.
And this is guaranteed for, if you, you would lock it in with no increase at-
So, you're talking about a, about a penny a kilowatt hour savings?
So, I know they were looking at Constellation as one of the, one of the companies.
That's what they're recommending, is Constellation.
And I can tell you, I contacted the Public Utilities Commission, and they had three complaints in two years, which were nothing complaints. They were resolved, and there were, there were very few issues with Constellation. I thought that was the company we were looking at going with, so that's the one I researched. So, there were very few problems with that. The only, the only thing I would say, whatever rate we're going to set for the town or whatever rate we're going to pick for the town, I would want, not want to go too much higher than what Unitil is giving us. You know what I'm saying? Because if, if Unitil is going to set that rate at a certain amount and the other-
Well, it's not, we're not higher.
Go ahead.
We're projecting Unitil to be the 085 year round.
Right.
And they're, they're like a penny cheaper.
But I wouldn't want to go in higher than that into a three-year contract because we could go up or down with Unitil.
Yeah, but the odds of that, you know, but the other thing is keep, I think they're looking at the six months because then, then that's going to give it more towns will be able to jump on board because others were going through to 2022. So, we're looking to increase the buying power. This is, you're limited to these towns listed. So, that's why they only want to do three years to get us to 2022 because then the, the others are already in a contract with someone else.
I, I don't, I'm, I'm just curious, why is the Epping School District so much higher?
Their current utility is Eversource, which is higher.
Yeah, they're not in Unitil.
No, I understand that, but why is, so, because of that Constellation says, oh, we're not going to give you as good a deal as all the other towns?
They, they tried to explain that at the meeting because-
We're going to use you to subsidize the other towns?
But it's only, I, I couldn't tell you exactly what the answer was, but there was a reason because it started so much higher, it could also down so much. I'm not sure I'm explaining it right, but they did explain it to him because he had to take it back to his school and try to-
Is the coast taking lines into the new school or something they're paying for?
No, I would say it's because Eversource is projected to be charging them more, and they just want to come underneath that. And the difference, I mean, they can use that to offset, given the other communities at the-
Did, did Sumner actually look at that contract he sent to them?
I sent it over, I didn't hear anything from them.
So, I'd be interested to see what he says on the-
Yeah, and this is the same contract they've used in, what am I saying, not you, there's another group of towns that is entering their second round of this, and they're-
Oh, because Newton's aren't here, so it's not, can't be them.
Or maybe, yeah, can't remember the name of the town, somewhere else nearby, but anyway, there's a, there's another group of towns that's saving that contract.
The, the other thing is, if we're going to do it, we have to do it for September 25th.
I think it-
We either sign it or not on Wednesday.
This Wednesday, right?
Yeah.
So, I think we need to give Cindy a bottom line of what we'd be willing to tie in for.
It's the three-year contract.
No, 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 the amount-
Well, they, we don't know, they, these, these are just sample numbers, is my understanding. They're going to set the rate that morning.
We'll get the numbers that morning, and I was just talking to her, she can either contact you on Wednesday, let you know what it is, either that or you give her a, a limit to what she should agree to. I mean, if you want to pick a number that's, you know, say if it's any higher than what they're predicting, well, do you want her not to sign it, you know, or she can call you and let you know what they tell her.
My only concern with entering into a three-year contract is we've entertained the notion of getting solar put at the landfill, and their offer on that was a penny off a kilowatt hour, is that going to affect this?
Nope, that's just Cindy already answered that question, it, it has nothing to do with it. We're still, we would still get the penny off or whatever.
And that'd be through Unitil?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we, no, it'd be through the company, whatever we're paying, whatever kilowatt hours we use, they would pay us a penny per kilowatt hour.
Okay, so that's direct through them?
Yeah, it's direct through them. It's based on the, our usage.
Of course, that's kind of, that is a lot of rate anyway.
Yeah, but it, it, it wouldn't, has no bearing on it.
You got vetoed?
They did not override the veto.
Yeah, it didn't.
We can't do the larger sized projects, so probably-
Yeah, I think you need to pick a number that you're going to, to use, because once they follow-
Well, I, I would say if it's, if it's not at least this-
Which number?
Then we don't go with it. Because it's only a penny savings an hour, right? Roughly?
Mm-hmm.
A penny saved, does a penny earn?
Yeah, but, I mean, saying if it's lower than that.
Well, are you, if you're tying in for three months and obviously, I mean, I'm sorry, for three years, thirty-six months, then it's going to be obviously a lot cheaper than the, than the-
What if we, what if we gave the rate of .075? Not to go anything over .075.
That's the twelve month.
On the three year.
Why not the .072?
Yeah, I, I would say that-
Just to give us some wiggle room, just in ca, we, it's going to be, it's not going to cha, it's going to be, I'm just saying, that's the max we're going to pay.
Well, I'm thinking if they come up with this as a su, sales tool, they ought to at least honor it, this or better.
Anything, they'll do better.
Okay, I would agree. Cheaper the better.
So, the max, .072?
No, I would say the max just as, just like the schedule we have before us.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
So, the first year, the 0753, 0734, 0722.
It should be 0722, right, because we're going with thirty-six?
Thirty-six months.
Thirty-six months.
So, you want the 07?
Okay, I, I thought what they were saying was-
No.
My bad. I thought they were saying for the first twelve months it was going to be this-
No.
And then it would be diminished.
No, no, we would be getting that right off the bat, that's why I'm saying the .075, no more than that. That's over three years, that's, that's locked in, there's no increases, no nothing.
Well, that, they gave us this what, two weeks ago? So, I think they should be able to lock us in at .0722, that was just two weeks ago.
It should be similar, they just have to wait until the day, just to have the rate in front of them.
All right, how, how about we go with 073?
.073, make a motion to authorize Cindy Kennison to enter an agreement with RPC on electric aggregate that the town of Kingston will pay no more than .073 for a thirty-six month period.
With Constellation?
Whatever the company is, but yes, it's-
Constellation.
Well, that's, we've, we've researched Constellation, we don't know what other company that we're going to, without checking them out to see-
Yeah, they had the two companies in front of us at that meeting, and at that meeting they chose Constellation for thirty-six months based on the recommendation of the RPC.
So, this other one's even off the table?
Yeah, that's off the table.
So, Constellation would be the one we go with?
073.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion, any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you, so you can let Cindy know? Anybody got objection to taking the 7:30 now? Nope. Well, we can do the minutes if you want.
Yeah, if you want to do that resignation.
Sure. We're in receipt of a letter of resignation from Bill Bixby, who serves on the fire department, fire station building committee. Please accept my resignation from the committee, it has been fun and an honor, but with my upcoming travel, I feel I should step aside and let someone more useful take my place. Thanks for the opportunity and good luck with the process. Bill. It's him, Bill Bixby. Can you let Mark Furlong, he's not here, right? Can you let Mark know? And can we send a, just a quick note of appreciation to Bill for participating, thanking him for his service?
Did Ernie end up getting the, the business? Did, did Ernie end up getting the, uh, the business?
They had them, um, they're not, they haven't done anything with them yet, or they're not ready to commit this yet. He wants to talk about it.
Okay, how about, uh, anybody wanna make a motion on the minutes?
Make a motion, approve the minutes of September sixteenth, both public and non-public.
Second.
Any discussion? We got a motion to approve the minutes of September sixteenth, public and non-public, as written. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Okay, we're, um, we have scheduled for seven thirty, Second Empire Homes. Oh, well, we got you Charlie. Breznerhand Project. When, uh, when is that gonna be ready?
I'm gonna meet with, uh, the attorney of Mr. Breznerhand Thursday afternoon.
Okay.
We've gone out, basically, we've done, uh, located, uh, the areas of impact, made an assessment of how many trees. It's a substantial amount. So, uh, we're looking at other options of where we could, um, create better buffers and lesser buffers to kinda offset some of the areas. So I wanna work with them a little bit more. So I'm hoping we can get back. How often do you meet, do you meet every Monday?
We're, we're weekly now.
You are? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, let me try and shoot for next Monday night then.
Okay, well, let Susan, you're gonna have to let Susan know by Friday to get on Monday's agenda.
Oh, okay.
Um, so that she can, so she can post it.
You will be. Okay, then I'll call first thing Friday.
Um, or would you feel more comfortable going with the following Monday?
It, it probably would. Um, I know you guys are waiting patiently. I don't wanna, uh, keep putting it on.
All right, I wanna, wanna see-
But I mean, the only one that's hurting right now is Mr. Breznerhand, really, at this point, where he's not getting any resolution towards getting his building purpose.
Well, he's still building, right?
Well, he's building, but he's not gonna get the occupancy. So I mean, there's really no more to do.
No, he ain't got them built yet.
At some point.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you. Grab a little pictures from you.
Sure.
How many do you have there?
We have two sides.
Yeah, let's do this. I guess the, uh, this process, one for, and for graph.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All set?
Okay, for the record, Charlie Phillips from SCC and Associates. I'm here with, uh, Eric McKinnon and David Evans of Second Empire Homes LLC. And basically, these guys just purchased, uh, two lots, uh, from Catherine Haynes, uh, at the end of Great Pond Road and at First Street. Uh, the location of the sixty-six Great Pond Road, now as you can see from the plan there, that's identified as tax map U four, lot one hundred. That's sixty-six Great Pond. And the other lot is seventeen First Street, and that's identified in the tax maps as U four one oh one. Everybody kinda familiar with this is? This is right up at the very end of Great Pond Road and, uh, abuts Camp Lincoln. And the town has a paper street in between the two lots, that I'm sure you're quite well aware of, because I know there's been talk about it over the years as to what you can do with that, uh, particularly with this is a, a one-way access in off of Ball Road. So, uh, what these gentlemen would like to do is, as you can see on the plan, on one oh one, or the smaller lot, that's only, uh, forty by eighty, there was an existing house there, dwelling. It's been there for years, uh, sad state of repairs. Uh, so what they've done is they've raised that in hopes of-
So the lot that, that was on this, uh, one oh one?
Yes, on seventeen First Street. You can see a kind of light outline in the back of the lot.
Okay.
Dwelling was, a two-bedroom, uh, single-family dwelling there. On one hundred, it's a, an undeveloped vacant lot. So, uh, in talking with, uh, your building inspector and health officer, kinda kicked around some ideas here. I know these gentlemen would have liked to put a new structure on each one of the lots. Um, I don't really see that being feasible. Uh, the lots are too small to support two separate dwellings. So the second thought here is, and I think a fairly good plan is, uh, give up putting an idea, uh, put up, uh, structure in place of the one on lot one, uh, one oh one, and instead, put the structure on the larger of the two lots, where you have a chance of meeting sideline setbacks. If you put the setbacks on lot one oh one, uh, in that zone, they basically cancel each other out. So there's no, uh, uh, building envelope on that lot. You do have a smaller building envelope, uh, available on lot one hundred. So what we're proposing would obviously require, uh, relief from zoning board of adjustment. Uh, anything that you did here would basically require relief from zoning board of adjustment. So, uh, hoping to site the building, or the new dwelling, still gonna be a two-bedroom dwelling on lot one hundred, and, uh, utilize lot one oh one for the leach field. So basically, you'd have your, your building driveway, and propose well on the bigger lot, and then utilize the smaller lot for the leach field. Now, to do so, as you can see, you're gonna have to cross through that paper street with minimally, um, uh, some sort of a sewer line. I'm assuming right now, I haven't really fully developed a set of plans here yet, wanna make sure this is our first stop, uh, before we went any further. Um, either be a four-inch, uh, PVC pipe across there for sewer flow, uh, most likely a two-inch force main underneath the paper street over to the second lot to join the two. So that's kinda the first thing we're here for, is to ask for permission to be able to do so. Uh, the second part of it is, um, as you know, there's, uh, there's some pine trees and, and, uh, uh, other things on the paper street that should we cut both of our own lots and leave those unsupported, they're probably gonna become unstable. So we're thinking maybe it makes good sense to take out all the trees. We also know this board, um, as well as other boards in this town, have also had concerns over the one-way access and, and have always had some sort of an idea of maybe somehow connecting through, um, Camp Lincoln. So maybe there's something we could do there to also help for that access through that, at least through that section of paper street. So that's what they're here for. Uh, they gave you some pictures of, of what they're looking to cut, uh, what they're hoping to do. I'll just let them kinda run you through that if you'd like. Any questions on the lots, the layout, or the history of it at all?
So are they, are they looking to, uh, basically clear-cut this whole parcel?
Excuse me?
Are they looking to clear-cut this whole parcel?
I would think so, yes.
We would be leaving a buffer to the left side of lot one hundred, where the existing dwelling is. Uh, there's roughly three trees in the right-of-way that the town of Kingston owns. Everything else is on lot one hundred, lot one oh one, that we'd be cutting. And the idea is, during the construction of this home, remove those trees, grade everything clean, loom, seed, you know, leave a nice finished product at the end.
Has Rich Sanalaya looked at this yet, or is he aware of it?
Who?
Rich Sanalaya, the-
Town road agent.
Road agent?
I haven't submitted anything to Rich at this point, no. I just, uh, wanna stop here first, I just had you-
Just a quick question for you. Did you ever consider, not that I'm saying that you should do it, or I'm in favor of doing it, did you ever consider, um, doing a land swap? So you take the middle lot that the town owns, and you provide the larger lot to the town of Kingston?
I didn't even think it was an option, but it's, uh, excellent point. I don't know if the town is really interested in that. If you are, there's potential?
Well, I, I, I would say if, if we're looking, originally, we spoke for many years about having an access road in the event that we need to evacuate Great Pond Park in any, any type of disaster. So that, that particular road was laid out to put a road through there and get access, get the vehicles out of Great Pond into and through, uh, Camp Lincoln. That's why that was laid out that way years ago. Since then, we've, we've put a lot of money into the, the entrance of Great Pond, but, uh, I-
Cause that used to flood out frequently.
All the time. Yeah, we couldn't get residents in and out of it.
But I, I thought even with the raisin, we raised like three feet, but I thought we still, the intent was eventually to make a second egress.
The problem was gonna be with that, with, with, uh, Camp Lincoln. Um, in emergencies, we could do it, but not all the time under their property. My understanding was that. No, I just thought I'd throw that out there about, um, whether anyone considered doing a land swap with the town taking the large apostle, and you taking the small apostle, putting the septic system side by side with the home.
Yeah, that wasn't an idea that we had, uh, even really tabled. It wasn't an idea that we had tabled, so.
The, uh, proposed line underneath the road, proposed road, how de- how deep would that be?
As deep as we need. If there's any, um, I mean, if it's just a force main, you could bury it, you know, four or five feet.
Okay.
And get it out of the way, right?
So we wouldn't be down part of the future, you know, with, uh, any sort of road layout or connection you could wanna do. How many trees are on the, uh, on the lot that you own on, uh, U four one oh one?
On this lot here?
Uh, this is, I wanna say there's a cluster of six, six or seven pines in the front on, uh, lot one hundred. Lot of it's saplings. There's a handful, uh, uh, larger hardwood.
So, so essentially, is that, Charlie, is that lot gonna be big enough? In the future, if someone wants to put a garage there, or some kind of an, uh, another outbuilding, or-
One oh one?
On, on one oh one?
Not without relief from ZVA.
But it could happen, right?
It could happen. Like you said, it would require repairs. These lots are far enough away from, uh, the lake two. They're outside of shoreline protection. So there's no, uh, limited, uh, or coverage requirement that, um, DES has on it. We do have cooperation for the, uh, the owner of lot one oh two. As you can see, his well, that's to the right of one oh one. His well is fairly close to the lot line, and so we would need, um, an encroachment waiver if we were to put the septic system on lot one oh one, and he's expressed, um, some cooperation here in allowing us to do so. He also has a couple of trees right on that fence line that he would be interested in having removed if this was to move forward as well.
So I'm thinking about the new owner, uh, purchasing that. Let's say this deal went through. The septic system goes on one oh one, the house goes on one hundred, the town continues to own, obviously, the center lot. So for the owner of that property, there's a number of people that utilize that as a, as a trail. And what kind of issues is that gonna create in the future for, uh, people that are exercising their right to utilize town property through that in between the two lots? You know what I'm saying?
Right. I, I think that property owner would have to fully understand that there is a limitation. It's, that's town-owned property in between the two parcels.
Right.
And that the town, and the town, um, the people from the town of Kingston have the right to use that.
That's correct.
Yeah, I can tell you how it's gonna be. That, that's gonna become a parking area, right there.
For the two of Pudd House.
Yeah.
Right. That's why I was talking about the two different lots and-
Well, perhaps one thing you could do is-
I mean, we already have that now down, uh, from Main Street, the town property. They got boats and all kinds of stuff stored on it.
So I would think we would want to make, you know, put some boulders out in front of that and make it wide enough that we can get one of our emergency, uh, uh, four-wheelers or, or gators through the, for any type of rescue and for people to walk through there, but not to ride, um, vehicles through there and what have you.
You do have, um, a little bit of a wood trail there now, but it tends to wander onto lot one hundred as it comes out to Great Pond.
Right.
So that would have to be adjusted, moved over probably to the right side of that utility pole that exists there, kinda centered in the middle of the right-of-way. And maybe you could place the, uh, the boulders there, the, or fence, gate, whatever you want.
Charlie, what do you got for, I didn't see the scale. A, a well radius. I see the proposed.
Yes.
The, these well radiuses are, are for the existing, uh, adjacent well, isn't it?
Correct.
Okay.
So you should see the septic area is affected by the lot on one oh two. We'd be within his well radius, and we'd meet all the other setback requirements.
The system would fall within that.
Yes, yep, the leach field.
How many acres is that?
I mean, that might be a, a good alternative where, you know, a land swap might be a good idea. It would, you know, that, because I can just see that turning into a nightmare for the, we, we get this at a number of places in town that have, we get them off of New Boston Road. People are blocking our right-of-way. They're in here all the time about that, right? Down off of, uh, where is it?
Meepel?
Meepel, I'm down, way down through there.
Yeah.
The only, the only problem I could see, and that's why I'm kinda reluctant to even bring it up, that if we use that as an emergent, somewhere down the line, if we use that as an emergency exit from Great Pond-
It's not a straight, straight shot?
It's a straight shot down the middle.
I, I would like to see what Rich Sanalaya has to say, definitely as far as-
I think we need it.
Both having a line underneath the right-of-way or the land swap.
Or Dennis.
Well, the other, uh, thought I had too is, um, to contain, um, so to speak, the new property owner, the new, uh, homeowner on lot one hundred is to provide a fence line along that property line in the town, in the paper street.
That's what I was gonna say.
Not only do you have a, you know, a visual barrier there, but it also tells them right-of-way that, you know, your lawn's not gonna keep migrating out onto the, into the right-of-way, into the paper street, and eventually-
For giving you these, we require a fence.
I would, uh, I'd recommend we do a site walk down. I took a look at this. Can you, can you stake out the two lots?
Tree issue is.
Let's take a look.
I mean, where do you envision the people parking?
I would think they were gonna park on lot one hundred in front of the house.
Yeah, it would be a single car.
Single car.
Single car.
Yeah, garage under.
We put a chain-link fence down each side of it. On lot one hundred, I, I mean, how much of a setback is that? I don't see a scale on here, but what's a setback from the property line to the dwelling?
Right now, the proposed dwelling, like I said, we're gonna need relief from the zoning board of adjustment. On the right side, we're holding ten feet. On the left side, we're holding fifteen feet. Both property line setbacks are twenty feet.
Sure, so you got twenty feet.
We meet the front, in the rear setback. It's the sideline setbacks, so they're restricted.
So you're going for a building setback and being within a hundred feet of the neighbor's well?
Most likely, yeah. I'd, I'd like to go, once I develop a septic design plan, a final plan, meet with your building inspector and the health officer, and go through, uh, any other issues that I might have with this thing as far as meeting any of the setback or siting requirements. I know they have the ability to waive some regulations in reg- in respect to septic systems, but I'm not sure of all of them, so I wanna, I don't wanna say that's the only two, cause there may be more. I'm not sure.
Does the board think about doing a site walk on that piece?
I would like to see a site walk and, and Dennis is, to get involved with the, uh, line going underneath and what the depth needs to be on future road use.
Is the property pretty low there now?
Yeah, I'm sorry, what?
The property pretty low. Is it wet in there?
Did you see the pictures?
Uh, no.
No. It's self- overgrown is what it is.
It's wet, overgrown, yeah.
It look, does look like it goes downhill.
It does.
Yeah, it, it does taper down a little bit, but I didn't see any wet areas.
What's the soil through there, Charlie?
Uh, well-drained soil. Pleasual till. We did test bits on both lots.
See if we can get a plate number off that truck. They're on our property. Turned into a parking lot already.
Yeah, looks like a drag.
Yeah.
Is that, uh, utility pole, did you locate that on the plan?
We did.
Yeah, it's right there. Right here in the middle?
It is.
With guy wires.
That picture you gave him to-
Where? Right here?
This one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Utility pole.
How long it'll take you to get it staked out?
Show, is that showing right in the center of the right of way, that utility pole?
Yes. There's a guy wire on, and behind it, and one to the left of it.
So this is the pole, and this is the guy wires, right?
Yep. Who would you like to see staked out, the two sidelines or basically both sides of the, the paper street?
Just, to me, it's enough to show what trees you're cutting.
Okay, why don't we do that, why don't we mark out the limits?
And to mark the center of town property.
Okay.
Kadich, and that's my opinion.
I think he does, he does his few lots, we'll be able to tell.
He does his lots, we'll be able to figure out the middle.
We'll figure that out pretty easy, yeah.
Well, it pretty much lines up with Great Pond Road, right?
Yeah.
Supposed to. Great Pond has some funny areas down there, there were fifty by fifty lots if you had a can of beans.
I will say, these aren't the smallest lots I've worked on and.
There's some smaller ones in there.
Actually, these are, I think the lot on the left is a combination of three of the uh original subdivided lots together, and the one on the right is two.
Some of those lots sold for three dollars.
Even before then, they were swapping cans of beans.
I just, I saw the three dollars and seventy cents for a lot.
Could we do a um site walk after work shortly, something like that?
How long would it take you to get it staked out?
I could get a crew out there within a day or so.
You wanna do it on a weekend or you wanna do it after work?
Still have daylight till about six thirty seven.
I can't do it this weekend, but I'll be.
I, I'm for him before you have the moons, anytime.
If it's staked out, do we need an official site walk, and can't we all just go with permission?
Next Tuesday.
Weather permitting?
As, as you said, Mr. Wilson, I mean, I could have it staked out tomorrow, Wednesday, and then if you wanted your leisure, and then maybe we could just meet back here again next Monday night and get back on the schedule.
Yeah, I think they want us back here next Monday.
Oh, I won't be here Monday afternoon.
So you wanna do it tomorrow and have us go there tomorrow night, is that what you're saying?
No, he's saying the next day or two, get staked out.
Okay.
So go there Thursday or Friday.
Thursday night?
Anytime's good for me.
Thursday?
Don't put pressure on him.
Well, I'm meeting with Mr. Resnerhan's attorney Thursday afternoon at four thirty, I could be there afterwards, say five thirty, six, would that work for everyone?
It gives us about an hour, so that's plenty of time.
For the state town, I mean, we can
Yeah.
Go down and take a look at it anyways.
Is that gonna be a public notice site walk? There are people who are interested, seeing that picture.
Not, well, not if we do it on our own time, you know, individually or whatever.
Well, but this is also the public notice, so. I can do five thirty Thursday.
Typically, when we do any site walk, it's public notice and the public is allowed to attend.
But somebody probably won't get there.
Let's see, I'll put them back on next Monday, in the meantime, we'll go down and take a look at it.
Sure, I'm good with that.
Um, do you wanna set up time, I, I'm not gonna be down there Thursday night, so do you wanna set up a time to meet Charlie, or does everybody just wanna go down on their own?
Doesn't matter to me, I can meet him anytime.
Why don't we shoot for five thirty Thursday night? That way, anybody that's here that wants to be there can. Somebody, can we contact Dennis and have him there too, or, or do we wanna let him just look at the plans? I think Dennis should have a say so in this since Rich is out.
Yep.
Would you like me to forward him a set of the plans?
Can we notify the abut of Camp Lincoln?
They're here. Are you, you guys representing Camp Lincoln, or you just here to see what's going on?
Tell you what, why don't we, you anything else, Charlie, before I open it up for public comment? Okay, oh. Uh, so anybody from the public which to comment, you got three minutes, just come right up here and grab the microphone. I'm gonna, we're gonna need your name and address for the record.
You have to put those mics pretty close.
Yeah, within six inches.
Alright, my name is Jeff Waugh, my last name spelled W A U G H. I uh own the house, twenty one First Street, the neighbor on the left of this proposed lot.
The one depicted on the plan?
Yep.
Okay.
Right where they have their plan. That is like, I know you asked about the, the grade, it's uh real low right there, in the winter when they're doing the plowing and stuff, that's like six feet deep of water. The whole area, the whole entrance of our street is water, my concern is they build this, they bring that up or whatever, cause there's a trail there right now. I'm sure you guys know of it, that fills up with water too.
Yes.
If that all gets brought up, it's gonna just push it towards my house more so. I already get some water, but I don't want a swimming pool in my basement. And there's all sorts of uh, like, wetland vegetation, like skunk cabbage, ferns, everything in that spot right next to my well. Probably not even ten feet from my well to the right. That was my only issue.
Do you have two wells there?
No, one's an old dug well, and then I have a drilled well also.
Yeah, that, that lot has always filled up.
Yeah.
That, that's part of the reason we'd have the town engineer there.
Yeah.
And he would also have to prove as part of the building process that he could make it work.
Like I said, that's my biggest concern, and I want people to be able to go out there and walk, I don't want people cutting through my yard to do it, and I have a Great Dane, I don't want any issues with her, she's a great dog, but I don't need no issues with any of that. Um, yeah, like I said, just the water is my biggest concern.
And there is a lot of water there.
There's a ton of water. Like the whole street floods.
Yeah, your lot is really low.
Yeah, it is.
Well, right now, would you, with it, the house is over here on the right, right?
What's that?
The, the exit, well, the one that's been raised recently was on the right lot.
Yeah.
The one on the left, did, was there standing water on that lot, or it would just run out?
Oh, the side lot through his, uh, there, there is water in that.
Where they're proposing to build the house now.
Yes, that's wet. In the winter, right now it's not.
That's, that's certainly gonna have an impact, have you seen his lot? His lot's down here, that lot's.
Right, I, I do realize there is a great difference, yep.
Yeah.
Massive great difference. That's all I gotta say, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Pava, and I'm twenty two First Street. I basically have the same concerns, mostly having that path blocked, and then two, it often fills up with water there. Our road is, if we get a heavy rainstorm, our road is covered right there where the house is proposed. And I know my neighbor's house already floods when it's heavy, I can't imagine with a house being built there, it's gonna be awful.
Ca- can I ask where you live?
I live across the.
Oh, across the street, okay.
So that would make it, so flooding, I can't get out of my driveway. But those are my concerns, the flooding and keeping that path open for people to walk.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Justin Basillo, I live at seventeen Second Street, uh, back part of my property is actually sixteen First Street. Uh, so I'm directly across from that property on Great Pond there. Um, major thing is the one way in and out of Great Pond, I can't tell you how many trees along, last year went down and blocked our way out. Um, uh, my kids go up that path all the time, out to Camp Lincoln, to see the farm animals and stuff like that. Um, and constantly I go out there, you can just see it's completely flooded, um, from like early, early spring to, you know, beginning of summer. The biggest thing with that in the winter, um, is the big state plow trucks go down there, and that's usually where they push all their snow, is off to the sides of, of the, uh, the other side of where that, uh, I think it's lot one hundred, uh, right there is usually where they push it. Um, so it just fills up and, I mean, we've talked about six feet of high pile of snow. Um, I just uh don't see it working out well, if we can keep that path, that's really ultimately the goal, that's why it was there originally. So I'd like to see it stay there and, and go from there. So, that's all I have.
Do you think, if you got this pole moved and that cleared out, do you think that would help with the, the plowing and the water situation?
So they come out of Great Pond and they push straight in, you got nowhere to put it?
But the pole's there, so they must, they can't really push straight in, can they?
Right, no, they can't.
No, it's trees and everything else.
So, so where are they pushing, over to this lot over here?
They push both sides, they push both sides, and then they come down and then, cause they can't, they push down to the end here and, and up on top of the hill. But definitely, I mean, who's gonna have the biggest problems, the gentleman up back, because I've seen four or five feet of water in that lot sometimes, it's, it's when they get, I've seen that house underwater a number of times over the years.
Is it mostly from the snow?
No, it's, it's, a lot of it is heavy rainstorms and stuff, they really get flooded out there, I mean, really flooded.
Right now, do you, the, the water runs off onto that lot one hundred?
It is, it goes down like, like a bowl. It comes down off these lots, it runs this way and runs this way, and he gets the majority of the water there. Have you come up with any plan, Charlie, for how you're gonna take care of the water from running?
No, I haven't developed it far enough at this point, I haven't even really started to establish the septic design, just wanted to open up dialogue on it.
Yes, sir.
My name's Steven Savoy, I'm at sixty four Great Pond Road, uh, directly across First Street from lots ninety nine and a hundred. Major concern, I'm just really here to reiterate what everyone's already said, I have a bird's eye view of the flooding that goes on, because my lot sits on top of the other two, I look down on both of them. And a lot of water, uh, also, I have a teenager at home, and he likes to use those trails, and any excuse to get him away from an electronic device, I'm gonna take. So really need that access, uh, emergency purposes also, cause like my neighbor had said already, uh, we've had a lot of trees come down, and not even just in the winter time, just during the year alone, we, we, something goes wrong, we really need that emergency.
Can a vehicle go through that, or is it pretty much just a walking path?
It's, I couldn't fit my vehicle through, but if you need to get an ATV in there, it would work.
Yeah, that's about all you get through now, it's grown up. Years ago, you could.
That's all I got.
Thank you. Anybody else before we conclude the uh public comment?
Hello.
Alright.
I'm Sarah Bight, also of sixty four Great Pond. Um, not only is that a dangerous area for flooding, but that paper road is used by many people in the area. It's not only a right of way to Camp Lincoln and to the point on the other side of water, but it's also access to the trails, it's great, it's a great area to use um in emergency situations, cause as most of us know in that neighborhood, Great Pond at the other end gets blocked off often. And it's a one way in, one way out. I mean, over the years, we probably, I've lived in the neighborhood since two thousand and five, and we bought our house in two thousand thirteen. We've blocked, we've had a blocked road at least ten or eleven times, we've had a point where my brothers made it out on the trail to go out and get to work or what have you. You, that's an access route for most of us, n- uh, along with being um a form of like entertainment or family things to go hiking or go to the camp. I guess that's about all I had to say.
Okay, thank you.
I ask a quick question for Camp Lincoln, you still allow people to access that in your property, correct?
We do, we, uh, when we got in a group like that, we got in a campus or a weekend group, we allow the community, the neighbors to walk the trails or do the hogs, um, you know, it's a nice walk, there's, there's lots of trails. Um, I have people who access Rock Breman, uh, through their, uh.
So it's a direct access to your property and you allow people to cross it to?
We do, as long as we don't have a cross sign, something like a campus there, we allow, they just can do this.
Thank you.
Okay, so I guess it's uh.
Uh, I gotta say, I, I own fifteen First Street.
Okay.
I've had it since, oh, oh, seventy years now.
What's your name, sir?
Uh, Russell Quintell, I'm the owner of fifteen First Street.
Thank you.
I, I lived in town for seventeen years off Fadelsi's Point. I have, I rent that property, and I have on three sets of tenants in there, and they love, they love the, the spot, but their major concern is those trees. The previous owner of that property, I reached out to several times, and at one time, I offered to cut those trees down at my own expense. Those, there's three or four that are dead. There's, I think there's at least ten, maybe eleven trees that need to come down. I've had my last tenant that lived there, they lived there for over four years, they said on some windy days that they would actually leave that house because they could hear the trees cracking. It's just a matter of time.
So what lot is it you're talking about, the one next to it?
Right next to it, so.
When you come down Great Pond Road, the blue house that used to be there, I'm the red house on the right.
To the right of that, the one that's been, to the right of the one torn down?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and the trees you're referencing, are they on the lot where the house was, or are they on?
They're on the lot where the house was.
Or the town right of way?
On the, uh, it's the house where the lot is, so.
Okay.
Um.
Just to give you an idea, I took some pictures the other day, that's my house, right, you can see the trees. There, it's, it's just an accident waiting to happen, and I believe a couple of trees, if you come out of Great Pond, you take a left and go to the end of the stop sign, you take a right, I don't know what that road is, but a house on the left down there, I believe a couple of trees like them took their house up, delivered it, delivered it a trail. So.
I get why my other, my neighbors want access, and I get it, my tenants use those trails too. I'm all for the house being built. I, my main concern is those trees, and the previous landowner, it took me years to get ever touch with her, and then when I finally got in touch with her, she wanted nothing to do with the trees.
Well, it sounds like these gentlemen wanna clear cut the lot.
I, I, right, but if the residents or the town, the planning board, the zoning board or whatever, put the garbage on this, I'm still stuck with those trees. And if, God forbid, now, I'm liable, if one of those trees comes down and seriously injure some, if they're sleeping, and we get a norista. seriously injure some, if they're sleeping, and we get a norista, right, and a tree comes down, it could kill them. All right, so, I mean, and if people are walking through those trails on a windy day, a tree could come down and hit them. And there is, and there is a little bit of a flooding issue down there. And my backyard floods out too on heavy rains, and a lot of it comes off the town road. So, the way the, the crown of the road is, it crowns like this, the water comes down off the road, down the side of my driveway, and floods my backyard. So, town wants to put a huttop berm there, so the water runs down the street, you know, that, that's a fix. I don't know if there's enough land over there, maybe they could put a small retention pond there so they can funnel the water.
Anybody lives on a road.
Oh, I understand.
Water sheds into their, yeah.
Right, but I, I also do it for a living, so when we put roads in, there's a water issue, we run a berm. To try to divert the water, or if we have an issue, we'll put a small retention pond in, I don't know if they have enough land there, they could funnel the water into a retention pond to catch it. Um, but, my main concern is those trees, and I'm all for them building a house there, and I'm all for them, I'm all for the residents having access to Camp Lincoln to the trails. I, there's gotta be, there's gotta be a, a way to resolve everybody's concerns. That's all I got to say about that, I mean, I just wish my, my neighbors would be a little bit more open-minded, because it's just more than just a house being built, access to the trails, there's, there's a massive safety issue there. And I tried.
Well, well.
To pay to get those trees down.
Just to be clear, he, he, he's not talking about restricting access to the trails, it's town property.
Right.
What he's asking the town is to allow them to put a septic line underneath that right-of-way, that, that's what they're asking.
Yeah, we, we, where I work, we do it all the time, you could run a two-inch, um, schedule forty.
We're not talking about blocking off the trail and any of that.
No, but just, I just want my neighbors to know, I'm with them on the trail issue, I'm with them on the water issue. But, the house that was there was rodent-infested, bug-infested, it's good for the neighborhood that it's gone. It's good for the neighborhood that they build a small two-bedroom house over there, it's good for the town, taxes, maybe they'll get another kid in the school. It ups everybody's value of the houses around, if they do a good job, cause I can tell you, I'm gonna be paying attention. You know, so I just, I think there's a way that all the issues can be resolved, so everybody in their neighborhood's happy.
Okay, thank you.
If they can fix a, a water problem by putting a small pond in there, I think it would help everybody else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie, just by walking on that property, does it look like that's gonna have to be a race system over there?
No, actually, uh, we get, our test pits indicate it's very good soils over there.
Sand?
Yeah, so I was, my envision was, uh, probably in a viroseptic, um, you can get them close to the water table, get it down low, so there wouldn't be any sort of, uh, mounding there at all.
Yeah, this design you hear, this is a gravity system which isn't gonna...
No, that, I mean.
That's definitely not gonna work.
This is just a draft.
Because it would, if, I would think that the, the town, if we are receptive, we're gonna want that line very, four to six feet down, so that if we do extend a road through there down the road, we're not having to deal with any lines.
And the other thing I could offer up to is, uh, a plant completion of the system, should this move forward, we can do an ASBIL and give you a copy of that ASBIL, so you have a good location where the line is put in, once it's constructed.
Have you looked at anything as far as stormwater or water runoff, have you done anything?
No, I have not.
Not yet?
Nope.
I think you heard a lot of people concerned about it, and I hope you just take a look at that.
Well, it's, it definitely will have to be part of the proposals we move forward.
Yeah.
Definitely the neighbor next door.
Yeah, I mean, in our visits, Greg and I, to the property, um, I haven't noticed any water, you know, I haven't, I do, I do notice that it slopes down, so I can understand how in the wintertime, early spring, that could be an issue, but, you know, it's definitely something we're not afraid to tackle. As far as controlling it and whatnot.
Alright, so we're gonna take a look at it, uh, Thursday, at what time was it, five-thirty?
It's fine.
Yep.
Five-thirty Thursday evening, bring your bug spray.
You guys Monday, I have to go all the way up to the, I'll be, I'll be on by thirty.
Be thirty.
Thank you very much.
And, I would suggest for Monday, if you're coming in, that you, you take a look at maybe some possible solutions to address in the water.
Sure.
Issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we did the, uh, electrical workman's comp, we're gonna check with Mike Boy and then make a final decision on that, right?
Yep.
Okay. We've had some discussions on, uh, changing the payroll to bi-weekly.
I'm talking with Cindy.
Hey, if you guys are gonna have conversations, please do it out in the hall.
Okay.
Talking to Cindy, the, um, savings is fairly minimal, but what it does is, it frees up a lot of her time. Um, but, talking to Selectman Riggs at the end, he said that, you know, I guess he pulled the work, cause the work is on.
Some of it, some of it.
So I was just looking at, just, you know, seeing if anyone was interested, but I would probably say at this time, it seems like people aren't interested in it, but.
Well, was that just going to bi-weekly or also requiring direct deposit?
No, it was, what's that? Yeah, it was bi-weekly.
Federal government requires everybody to do a deposit.
It wasn't mandating, uh...
I think we were just talking about the bi-weekly though, not the direct.
Right, I, I don't think we were talking about mandating the direct deposit.
Cause I think there'll be a substantial savings in that, not having to send out paper checks weekly.
She sent out an email today that broke down, that's the savings on going to bi-weekly is not doing the envelopes and the paper checks. And, um, I don't know if you've got the emails, pretty minimal.
Three or four hundred bucks email?
Yeah, three or four.
It was the biggest thing that, and it, that's what I was kind of capturing, is per time.
Yep.
That is, that's.
Did she indicate the amount of time she, it would, she could save?
No, she didn't, but it, I mean, obviously, I mean, she's taken on more and more roles as far as stuff goes, three of her time would be invaluable.
And I, I think the uncaptable cost in that, is there are other projects that she's
not doing.
Not able to do because she's doing payroll on a weekly basis, and I understand it's her job, but, and, and I also understand that people like to get paid every week, but, you know, there are jobs, many of them, where you only get paid bi-weekly.
I think the RSA'd have to look at it, but, um, you have to have the employees, uh, the majority of employees willing to switch to bi-weekly.
No, this ain't a union kind of.
No, I, I actually think there is an RSA, cause you.
The only thing that she pick, um, pulled out was that, um, bi-weekly is included in the RSA now, you wouldn't have to go to the lady board to change.
Okay.
So you can do it, but of course you want to.
If you wanted to go to monthly, you'd have to go, probably.
Yeah, I think if it's more than, you know, longer period of time, but you can do it, but, you know, like she said, and like, what you guys are saying, is maybe pull the employees, let them know, I personally don't care, but, someday.
Well, we got the fire department concerned about getting paid, never mind bi-weekly, but, different times each week, so, different hours each week, so. I, I can imagine they're not gonna be receptive to.
Yeah, the highway expressed, uh, issue with overtime, that if they had a lot of overtime in the two-week period, is that can impact their taxes paid, and I told them, it's not supposed to be set up that way anymore, but, still kinda works out that way.
You, you, even with overtime, you'd have to go pretty high, y- you know, it's still the sixty-eight hours or whatever, if you're gonna get a big hit, but we don't pay any big longevities or anything like that, or disbursements.
Well, can I ask, has anyone contacted NHMA about this, because I'm sure we're not the first town to transition to this type of?
Contact them for what reason?
Well, isn't that the, they're there for, for a resource for this kind of thing?
No, uh, I mean, to ask them a question on whether or not we can do it?
No, just, what kind of issues have they seen when switching to this, and if employees have concerns about overtime, or if there are other things that change, I mean, I wanna be able to address employees' concerns. If it's just, I like getting a check every week, that's not really a valid concern.
Uh, well, I, I, I would say their life is based on receiving a paycheck once a week now, so if you, if you, all of a sudden, and they pay their bills according to that, so if you put that off for at least one week, a- and, uh, it would be disruptive, I think that's what the concern is.
That was the biggest thing.
But I, I think the, you could do to alleviate it, but it's, it's all how you, um, look at it. Right now, they don't get, they don't get paid to the end of the week anyways for last week's work. This way, to change the pay period to say Wednesday or something, you know, the, the weekend's on Sunday, they get a paycheck Wednesday, they're only going three days before they get a paycheck, versus.
But that's gonna be the same after.
It's gonna be two, what do you mean?
Friday or Wednesday, it's not gonna matter after.
Well, I, I don't think you spring this on them overnight, and I also think when the paper performance comes out and everybody's getting a catch-up check on that, that's, that gives people a chance to transition to the, the bi-weekly paper, where they would have more than their standard check, so that they could.
I don't think there was catch-up checks last week, last year. Wasn't it last year that we get them ahead of time? Susan?
I, I don't believe.
I believe it was.
Okay, I thought we still had.
I don't think there was, I don't think there was retroactive checks. Cause Cindy got them out way early, I believe, unless I'm mistaken.
She did get them out early.
Cause I don't, I don't think there was retroactive checks, was there?
As I recall, it was the, uh, week after, or week before the, uh, she got them out early.
I think they just, your, your amount changed going forward.
What's that?
The amount just changed going forward.
I think so, I don't think there was a retrocheck. Could be mistaken, but, uh...
I didn't think it was as substantial as previous years, because we hadn't done it, but it was still backdated to the first of the year.
Uh, no, because the, 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 I think the salaries are still running from March to March. Not from the first of the year to the first of the year.
Okay.
I believe.
No, you're right, I'm sorry, because when we were talking about the percentages, that was based on the full year, and you're correct, I'm sorry.
Okay. Alright, um, so, uh, do we have questions, do we wanna contact NHMA, do you wanna poll the employees, or how do you wanna proceed?
I would say we can poll the employees, I can tell you how most of them feel, which is they wanna keep it at a weekly payroll.
Okay.
I did speak with Cindy in detail, um...
Did she indicate how much additional time she would save?
Uh, she did not, uh, but.
Basically doing it once instead of twice, over the course of two weeks, right, so, whatever amount of time she spends in the payroll.
Well, that, that's the question, I mean, how long's it take her to key it in, a couple hours?
I don't really know, but it would save her time and Jane wouldn't have to come in every week.
She did say she.
She also said she was, she was supported a hundred percent, is what she said, but it's not for her call.
Yeah.
It would be, it would be nice for her, uh, that off week to do other things.
Do you want me to, uh, poll the employees, I'd be happy to do that and report back next Monday.
What do you wanna do, Rich?
I'm, I'm against going to bi-weekly.
Joe?
Just because too many people live week to week in this town, and.
I agree.
I've talked to enough people already that have voiced a no against it, and, you know, some even called after they saw it on TV last week.
Phil?
I can't recall the last job I worked at that I got a weekly paycheck.
I haven't worked at one, I didn't get a weekly paycheck. This place requires direct deposit, and they don't mail out a stub or anything, if you want it, you have to go onto the payroll account and look it up, so they save money that way.
So, are you in favor of direct deposit?
Yeah.
I...
I mean, we are talking about two separate issues here, I guess, so.
I think it's two separate issues, but I'm not, personally, I'm not in favor of mandating, uh, how they have to deal with their paychecks.
The, the other thing about direct deposit, it doesn't do any good to save money unless you're not gonna send out the stub and, you know, all that, like, we have to go on, we use, uh, fidelity, we have to go onto their site and look up our pay stub if we wanna see it, we never get anything. You know, I look up vacation time, everything on that.
The direct deposit, you can, she could print off just a regular piece of paper, regular ream of paper, uh, and, and you'd have that versus a check with a stub. That's the difference.
No, I, right.
I'd be for at least polling the employees and see how they feel.
It's fine.
Okay, you want me to poll this week, come back Monday night, next Monday night?
Would it be possible for you to contact NHMA and see if they have any input or guidance that they can offer in that experience?
Why can't we have department heads that hand out checks?
And why don't we, can you check with Cindy, see how much time it will actually save her?
You don't have to do it all.
Okay. Okay. We got the tax credit liaison reports. Any updates?
Uh, I haven't had a meeting since last week.
Okay.
This is my week for meetings.
Chief, you know there's a building committee meeting on Wednesday?
Uh, no, you're not going.
Yeah, well, yeah, okay.
You're gonna be there, huh?
No, I, I need you to, that's it, yeah.
Uh, what else?
That trailer, that trailer was moved, the one we spoke about, gentleman's very nice, he moved it.
You mean the shed?
Very close to here, that's.
Oh, okay.
Yep, all set, he came in actually one night, we were meeting, and he spoke with me.
That's good.
He did move it, neighbors are happy.
Planning board is proposing putting a, um, projector in their budget this year. I did tell them that, at least on the conversations we've had, as far as sound engineer and projector, or an office, maybe. Um, so, that came up in conversation, also, um, a lot of the department heads have not submitted their CIP, capital improvement plan information, I believe only two of them have. So, if, in your liaisoning, you can tell the department heads that you deal with.
You know who has and who hasn't?
I do.
You do?
Have they changed the rules of it?
It was supposed to be in, I think, on the fifteen.
Yeah, but have they changed the rules of what's required to report?
No, but typically, if nobody, so, if nobody has any capital improvements planned in the next timeframe, they typically will send Glenn a email saying.
Nothing.
So, like, no conservation to the, um, okay.
The fire department got the answer?
I don't think so, I, I don't have my phone on me, I could pull up the email, but, um.
Heritage turn. Well, they, I mean, they already got the building and all that down anyways, I believe.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't.
Yeah, it's, it's for the next six years.
Yeah, okay, so.
What you're gonna do, I'm sure that's been in there for a while.
I would assume so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, but Graham's not gonna know anything, so I'll assume it's.
It's, it's like anything new.
Well, and, I'm, I'm sure either Glenn Greenwood or Glenn Koppelman would be willing to reach out and help them. You know, if, if he requires assistance and just kinda walking through it, I don't think there's anything major beyond the station for him, but it'd probably be good, it'd just, for him to be involved.
Okay.
If he has any, or, I know he's got a couple other things going.
I'll reach out to my people, because I thought Heritage had done it, and you said conservation, said.
Conservation did, yes. If they send an email stating they were, they didn't have anything planned, I don't know about Heritage or HDC.
Did you, did everybody get the, uh, see the, uh, or sign off on the final two thousand eighteen budget report?
Yes.
I think I got it back.
Okay. See the notice of the ten-year plan hearings below, would you want to begin your October twenty-eighth meeting at the library?
It was suggested me, to me, it was suggested to you, just because it's gonna be meeting here on October twenty-eighth, that's it's, uh, like, one of the, the ten-year plan. One, two, ten, that's the point, really. One or two to ten, it takes a point, really.
So the question is whether or not we wanna have our selectmen's meeting at the library?
If you, if you wanna go there first, and then come back here for your meeting, I think is what you have to do, it's kinda tight, I don't know how long those meetings are. Or you can send, send a representative.
Is anybody in favor of us, uh, yeah, I mean, I don't know how we're gonna conduct our meeting there.
No.
Why wouldn't you then? If it's that.
We couldn't record it, we couldn't.
Yeah, no, you'd have to come back here, except, I guess, I don't know how long these hearings are, and how important it is for you to be there, or if you wanna send somebody.
You could do it, if, you know, if you didn't wanna go live, you could do it that way, but, it's a lot of time, but.
How many people? Maybe we can send a representative. There was an application for facilities use from Heritage presentation, we got, you got the Aerial thing. Everybody got a copy of the conference report for one twenty-five, we approved the minutes. Request from IPC.
I have one item in the.
Public comment. Okay. That looks like it. I miss anything, did I cover everything?
I have a quick question. So, you talked about sound things here. So are we going to budget money this year? Hire an engineer? Come into a survey of the building, is that the intent?
I think we have acoustic issues in here, we have presentation issues in here, and we have the microphones that we like, that we'd like to upgrade to.
Yep.
And I think it's worth putting a petition war on article with all those things included in there.
So I'll get pricing.
Yeah, but I think it has to be, we can't get a sound engineer to cut, we can't go to the vote for March, and they say, okay, hire a sound engineer, then we gotta wait another year. We gotta put, we gotta figure out what it would cost to make this acoustically sound.
And I think it's worth talking to Rich about what he has in the building's budget, if we can, you know, get a, a, one sound gen, I mean, one or possibly two, depending on what we hear back, but it'd be good to have the ballpark number, to go to the voters with, and not to exceed number.
Yeah.
It's been brought up to me on numerous, by numerous people, that the acoustics in here are horrible, especially for the TV station. The people, the YouTube, for some reason, works really well, the, the, the cable broadcast does not work very well, is what I've heard.
All five of us have brought it up.
Yeah, but even if you're sitting in the back there, you can't hear what's going on, it's, it's.
But I, I'll tell you, a sound engineer, the first thing you're gonna want is a carpet in here. So you gotta decide whether you're willing to do what the sound engineer wants.
Well, you do, but you could also throw the tiles up, at least. Not drop ceiling, not a drop ceiling.
You put in sound acoustics, or they're so high, that they're not gonna do much good. You could put baffles on all the walls, that's gonna help, but they're far away.
We gotta figure out something.
So I'll talk to Rich, and see if we can get a sound engineer in.
My work?
Yeah, we.
Okay, anything else before we adjourn to non-public? That'll conclude the televised portion of our meeting for tonight, thank you for watching, have a good night.